I'd like to say that during the comment section, I want to change it from comment section to a question and answer section. But during the comment section, we will not have any questions. I'd like you to get up and make your comments in your two-minute, allowed period, and then we'll get through the process a lot more quickly than we would if we discussed your comments. Are you ready to talk, Art?
I wanted to say something. I think this is a sham for a public hearing. You're limiting comments to two minutes. Our people here, people in the public, have also made analysis of this authority. And it's quite a different result. We want adequate time to present it. We've heard PR right up to now from your board here and the authority. We want to present facts.
Okay. When you go to Santa Fe speak before the legislature, many times they give you one minute to say your piece. We're giving you twice that.
Okay.
Art, that's all we get is to present the facts.
No, no. Most hearings-
Okay. We're going to go on with the comment section the way it's presented, in two minutes. If the comment section wants to get out of hand, we'll adjourn the public hearing. We'll have it some other time.
That's what I expect from you, Bill.
Okay.
You're of that type.
Art, first on the list.
Before we start with that, we need to adjourn the county portion part because I have to leave, and I need a motion from Commissioner Tapia to return our portion. All in favor, Senator Pablosina? Motion carries. Our county meeting is adjourned.
I'm sorry. Mr. Williams, if someone, if he needed more time, are you allowing someone to donate their two minutes to someone else because that wasn't stated?
Yeah.
Would that be all right? Thank you, sir.
My name is Art Duchan. I'm a Torrance County resident. I have a PhD in physics. I've worked over 27 years at San Diego National Laboratory. I've also worked on public work systems, including solid waste management in Eastern Europe. And first of all, I'd like to say there's some people in the audience who are going to yield me some extra time. I passed out a four-page supplemental to the public, and I'd like for you to go through that because we have a lot of other evidence here that I might present to the county attorney because it involves wrongdoing.
Art?
Yes, sir.
Who on the list would give you their time?
How many are there?
And your name is on the list?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you tell them their names?
That doesn't state your name. Okay.
Y'all do a little.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair Murray.
Okay.
Brian Chapin.
Okay.
Ed Reddick.
And you're okay?
Brian Case.
You said Brian Case?
Case.
Case. Your name is... Wait a minute. Okay.
Billy Mitchell.
Anybody else?
Billy Mitchell.
Okay.
And Mr. Sanchez.
Fred Sanchez.
Okay.
Can I go ahead? Twenty minutes. Good. I stated my technical credentials because this is not just a business plan or a business-oriented authority. It's a technical problem to-
Sorry, Joseph.
... and requires a technical solution. I passed out a four-page document for the initial discussion. It shows the organizational chart for the authority, and it lists the salaries of some of the prominent people who are managing it. There are 17 total employees, and the seven managers and administrators are paid very high salaries for this county. Mr. Ellis gets a lower salary of over $7,000,000, and the seven managers or administrators get a collective amount of over $365,000. This organization seeks to address both services to our Torrance County residents outside the populated areas, heavily populated areas, incorporated areas, and also to run the landfill. In our estimation and after our analysis, we see mismanagement for both aspects of this. Obviously, it's top-heavy, loaded management, receiving youth salaries compared to the people who actually do the work, who are mistreated at this authority. That's why there's a union problem right now, and many of the people call me, who are workers there, expressing their dissatisfaction with Mr. Ellis's management. Mr. Ellis reports to be an expert in solid waste management. Actually, he has no technical background. He has no degrees. His latest work before I came to Torrance County was as a social worker for 22 years. And I think many times he says things that mean he said, "Just follow me." The way you run the meeting, Mr. Williams, there's no possibility for public comment during Mr. Ellis's presentation. In terms of mismanagement, on the service side, we have people at the stations, and often we go there to recycle, and the bins are full. There's no possibility of even following through with recycling at the bigger stations. And we find that on the landfill side, there's a lot of mismanagement. They're accepting waste from Burnaleo County at a reduced rate that's filling up our landfill cell three faster when it has a replacement cost of $47 per ton. And there's also been other problems at the landfill that I don't have time to go into. Basically, on the second page of my handout, you see the authority really just encompasses Torrance County. It has a little bit of service to Guam in Guadalupe County. But Mr. Ellis continually makes the case that this is a multi-county authority, which it isn't, to allow people like Bill Williams, who lives in another county, to be active on the board. On the next page in the handout, you'll see some of the economic aspects that were not presented by the bright-eyed group of students. One of the problems the authority has is it's accumulated huge debts. In establishing cell three, they borrowed over $1 million from the environmental department. They have other loans outstanding to the tune of almost $1.5 million. And the debt service this year alone on those loans is $136,000. This is the problem, that these folks mismanage this. Torrance County provided $0.5 million to the line on cell three. So, and we're on the hook for all this debt. All this debt is our responsibility. And that's part of the problem. They are maxed out on debts. On the third page, this is their own analysis of the situation right now. Three-quarters of the way through 2013, they have, they should have 75% on some of these categories. You'll notice our county fees are above 75%. We're not the problem in the county. The deficits are coming from a reduction in income from landfill chipping fees. This is because the authority places such high costs, up to $47 per ton, on private haulers they compete with in the county, that these people take it to other landfills. They just don't want to use it. They started a septic disposal center out there on a grant, and I talked to Canon and other septic people, and they can't use it. It's too expensive. They drive it out of there. Recycling is a joke. Last year, Mr. Ellis was called Recycler of the Year. That's not what I would call him. He has only gotten a little $4,000 returned to the $27,000 he expected so far. These are some of the problems with the authority. I'd like to go on, and I guess you have that submittal, right? My next submittal to the county attorney deals with non-voting members of the board. The plan that they stunted today, the young people, was really an extension of a plan developed by Joey Ainsley and Joseph Ellis. And the two-page plan, which they now don't discuss so much, is the same conclusions. Let's raise the rates. Let's get more money from the county. Let's use all our politics and public relations to keep our overpaid managers in place. And if you don't, we're going to cut back on services. They've already cut out the Lord Collection Center in the last year. And the blackmail is, if we don't get a rate increase from you guys, we're going to cut back your services again. And should be cutting back their management and some of their loaded salaries. Incidentally, that includes a reference to the JPA that says Joey Ainsley should not be on this board and should not be voting. She could sit on in the quasi. She's supposed to be on there to interact with the county, but she sits here with you commissioners. She doesn't get a right to vote, but she's very prominent in the forum and in the votes that they bid for contractors. The next submittal I have is one we've already presented to the Attorney General office and also to the Office of New Mexico State Auditor. It deals with some contracts that were processed through the authority by CCS Construction, and it follows the same routine that we have now for the county probably. The contractor comes in with the lowest bid, usually about half of what it takes to do the job, and then there's change orders, and the price goes way up. The example we cited was the Southern Collection Station in Mount Airin, New Mexico. The initial bid was under $8,000. Mr. Ellis approved changes that ran up to $25,000. And in January last year, CCS won another contract to take care of the Guam area. And they received that award, but then they turned it down as soon as the investigation into the county misdeeds on contracting was revealed. This submittal with backup information on specific contracts has been given to these state attorneys general. Also, I'd like to mention a couple other things. Some members of the board here actually benefit from their board presence. Mr. Larry Urban was not present today. We've received copies from Mr. Ellis after we made specific inquiries of dozens of invoices that they've paid to Moriarty Pipe and Iron, spanning the period 2008 to 2013 while he's been on the board. This represents invoices of over tens of thousands of dollars to the small welding company in Moriarty. We also asked for documentation on bonding and insurance vendors used by the authority or the original landfill over the last five years. The only invoices, we got a few invoices back, not the list of vendors, but all the invoices are for insurance services of New Mexico, which is your company, Bill. In fact, we have copies of checks that you wrote to your company as the chairman of this order director. I want to make that submittal. We're not accusing you of anything illegal, but certainly unethical. Also, we have another submittal here that deals with voter fraud by two of the members of the board. They are Debbie Ortiz and also Bill Williams. Both of these people registered at false addresses in Torrance County and vote here, but they live in Santa Fe County. Everybody knows that. And the New Mexico Secretary of State confirms, that's the rules. You vote where you live. You don't go and turn up somebody, a vacant house or some distant relative, and list them as your residents, and then go vote that county. One might speculate why people do that. I think for Torrance County compared to Santa Fe County, it's the question of trying to be a big fish in a small pond. And unfortunately, we're the small pond. And I and other people are submitting to the Secretary of State. We have submitted already the evidence for voter fraud, which is a fourth-degree felony, to include Chairman Bill Williams here and Debbie Ortiz and other people who are prominent Torrance County phonies. As a resident of Torrance County, I want people making decisions on the taxes and the payments I make who live here, who get the service, who can evaluate the service, and then they can decide for me. Otherwise, get out of my county. For now, I don't entertain any questions because they sort of cut off our questions, too. Is there anybody that would like to ask a question? Yes, Bill?
My question is, Director Nunez, why are you doing this?
This is about the comment section.
I'm making a comment. Why?
You're a board member. You should be open to public.
That's not what we're here for.
We hold our board members and our political leaders, our community leaders here to a high standard, Bill, and you should be answerable to the public here. Absolutely.
No comment.
Are you taking a fifth of the coffee?
I'll just say no comment. Take it how you want.
No, you can't sit back and you're breaking down.
Are you three minutes in, Charlie? No, I'm waiting for a question. Give me a question, Mr. Barnes. I respect you.
Can we take a break a second?
You're not a co-
You can't take a break. She's here during the meeting.
Can I have a question?
Okay, wait. She's changing the disc.
Hold on one second. She's going to change the disc, or your comments and your question will not be heard. So just hold on one second.
Yeah, there may be legal proceedings on this. We'd like to get your comment on tape, sir.
Mr. Williams, do you want a mic to go up to the audience? Do you want a mic to go up to the folks in the audience so you can hear them?
They can come up here.
Okay. Okay.
You want folks to answer your questions? Identify yourself. My question is, Mike?
We're not ready yet.
The chair was asking that people go to the mic to ask their questions so everybody can hear.
Okay. Sorry, you can come up.
Make sure you want to state your name for the record.
My name is Michael Coons. I just, it's a personal meeting, I didn't see. I just have a question, why there was a study in the first place when this, Mr. Ellis, is qualified to do that study on his own. He's getting paid a lot of money to come up with that answer. And as far as a gentleman, I don't know your name out there, but I think recycling is very important. I don't know where you got that from.
If I could add something. Our recycling rate according to Mr. Ellis in our county is 4%. My wife and I estimate it to be about 1%. As you know, nationwide, it's around 33%. This county deserves a better recycling rate.
Mr. Duchan, I have a statement. How?
Come up. Should I have my stuff here so you can?
My name is Karen Corant. Does anybody hear me? My name is Karen Corant. Anyway, first of all, I'm very embarrassed to be a resident now of Torrance County based on what keeps happening to our people here and how valued the principles are, just going down the tube. And after that, it's like, what has happened with our accounting? And what is going on with people not being able to keep track of the money? And how can we end up with a deficit that large and no one has shared that with any of us who pay these bills every month or every quarter? Was there not some kind of special, did we not have people who are hired who are intelligent enough to run this type of budget that's out there? And I totally agree with the gentleman, Mr. Duchan, behind me about being able to, you know, recycle. That is a very, very, very shameful thing, this day and age. Even though we're very rural and some of us are very country, it still should be available, and it should not be full when you go in there to dump your stuff. So I'm asking this board, when you make your decisions of what's going on here, of what you're going to determine, I sure hope that you look at other avenues besides trying to increase people's amount that they have to pay a month.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to comment that we've requested the commission to put their budget on the net or to review it at least monthly at their meetings, and they refuse to do that. Mayor Hart of Moriarty is doing that. He's putting his budget online right now, where people can tune in and track it with time. And I think that's a very positive step for transparency in government. Yeah.
Do you have another question?
Want to come up?
My name is Heidi Coons, and I'm sure we're happy to hear that we're all recycling here. I'm disappointed to hear his comments about recycling doesn't pay. You know, I think we owe it to our planet because without our planet, none of us are here. So, you know, I live alone with my husband. We work very hard, very hard to make ends meet. But you know what? 90% of what I threw away, I drive it to Albuquerque to recycle. 5% goes to my chickens, and the rest goes to here. So $40 I pay a month or every quarter for what? For two bags a month. So like he says, you know, I want to take my paper recycle here. I can't because it's full. You take what? Paper. So you know, I think it's outrageous that we have to pay that kind of money when I'm driving all over. If I have branches, I have to drive 35 miles out of the way to Moriarty because they don't take branches. So what are people doing where I live? They're dumping tires, they're dumping branches and trees and dead animals by the side of our road. So you know, that's incredible. I feel, okay, I paid, but you know, give me something for what I paid. So that's not happening, you know? And now money is missing. I mean, I'm hearing these things that-
May I just add to that? It's a great comment you made, and I think the gentleman up front there from Burnaleo, you have to include the cost savings from the space you're not occupying in the landfill. And that makes recycling always a positive thing to do, even if you don't generate any money from the sale of the recyclables.
Let me clarify. I'm not saying I don't support recycling. What I'm saying is, is that you can't count on recycling to replace the deficit as a money maker, okay? It does save the landfill space, but what my reference was, it costs you $12 or $20 a ton to bury it, but it's costing you over $100 to recycle it. That's not a money maker. But I'm not saying that you shouldn't do it. What I'm saying is, is that don't count on that as a way to replenish your deficit.
You're right. I mean, that is true. I agree with you. I'd just like to comment because I don't think anybody in the public really knows that this tonnage from Burnaleo County, I mentioned this week, is being paid $30 per ton, 86% going into cell three, the line cell, the expense of $47 per ton of replacement value. That tonnage, 5,000 tons, is more than our whole county generates outside the incorporated area in one year.
Okay, thank you, Art. Appreciate your comments.
You know, I still have one minute left. You know, I would like, we used to be in Burnaleo before we moved out here, and we used to take, you know, whatever bags of trash we had and pay per bag of trash that we dumped. I felt that was a more honest way to do it. I know people where I live, I live alone. How much trash can those people have? So it's not fair to a lot of people to have to pay $40 to take one or two bags. So, you know, and I feel honestly, it will encourage people to recycle, you know, because gee, I don't want to take that much trash. I'm going to go out of my way to recycle, you know? Instead of just dumping, 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 I mean, you know, it's going to catch up with us. I think of what it is. So I don't know. I think, I hope that we all can look at a different way of doing this, you know? Instead of avoiding paying or, you know, right now we're being threatened that if we don't pay, they put a lien against my house, you know? Nobody should live like that. I should not be obligated to anything. I pay my taxes, I pay my bills, honestly. So I feel, you know, why can I be trusted? Okay, you have three bags of trash, pay for your trash and go. Instead of, you know, you're obligated to come up with $4 or else, you know? I think it's awful to live like that. It doesn't work for everybody. This is a poor county.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay?
Okay, thank you. Next person I have on the list is Hank Van Ness.
My name is Hank Van Ness. I live in McIntosh. The Torrance County ordinance, 94-12, gave birth to the waste disposal facility. And in that particular ordinance, it specifically cited state statutes as its authority for the county to establish a waste disposal. Well, the specific statutes that were cited in that ordinance indicate that the county may, I repeat, may establish, assess, and collect fees from the people who use the facilities. Not everyone, but just the people who use the facilities. That is statute. 4-5, 6-3, E, and F. And I have in the past provided a community initiative with references to those statutes. I have also filed in the past a lawsuit against the waste disposal authority and the county specifically attempting to determine for instance. Unfortunately, I included a few explanatory matters in that petition, and it was moved to federal court, and I had no option but to drop it. But what we need is a judge to rule on whether our test programs, and I may fall, is participational or whether it conflicts with respect statutes. In my opinion, be denounced. That's all I have.
Thank you. I didn't say harsh enough. I didn't say harsh enough. No. Those comments, I think. The next one we have on the, there's Jim Frost.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and all the rest of the folks. I just have a few brief com... My name is Jim Frost. I have just a few comments to make. As I was sitting back here, I was thinking about my drive down here this morning from west of Moriarty. First, I came by a fire department, and I thought, you know, that's costing us something. But luckily and thankfully, I haven't had to use it. Then I went to the postal office and sent a check to my insurance company to pay my fire and wind and auto insurance. And thankfully, I haven't had to use that, but it's still at the hip. And then, uh, oh, I, I passed a couple of state police cars, and I realized that I have to share a part of my taxes to pay those guys. And then I saw a couple sheriff's cars, same thing. I went by the solid waste, uh, transfer station in Moriarty, and I realized, yes, I do have to pay them monthly. And I do use that a little bit. I don't take much, but a few bags a month. Then I went by dispatch. I thought, you know, we all have to pay them through our taxes also. And they dispatch police and ambulance and various things. And I thought, you know, if I should stumble and break my foot, at least, uh, I paid my part there through my taxes, and they're coming to pick me up. Then I went by the animal shelter, same way. They picked up a dangerous dog. Then I climbed down, and I saw that sign for CCA. And, uh, I know that our county has to pay all of our tax money to take care of the, uh, the prisoners that are out there. Okay, real quick. And then, uh... I did have one more thing, but that's okay.
But I can't hear him, so y'all hold up, but he's through.
I just have one more sentence. Can I do that?
So, you did not, you did not...
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll quit. Thank you.
Just wanted to finish, you said, "Thank you, Karen Corant."
Uh, I've already spoken.
Okay.
I'll, well, I'll give my time to anyone else that wants it.
Adrian Williams.
I'm Adrianna Lutzens. I'm Field Operations Supervisor and Miss Management Director for the Solid Waste Authority. I've been with the association for fourteen years, and I can tell you that when I first started, and if you will go back and think about what this county was like as far as trash goes, um, it was pretty sorry. I take responsibility for containers at the stations if they're full and the attendant does not call, especially in the recycling. As you've mentioned, that's something, I've heard a couple of comments about it being full, and you weren't able to throw things. That's not true. Even if the containers are full, now wait, if the containers are full, you can still drop your recyclables. That is not a concern. And even if it's trash, if the attendant will call me, I will give him suggestions on where to put the trash until, um, a container is available. And so I just wanted to introduce myself and tell you that I'm available for your comments and concerns and questions concerning the, um, stations. And, um, if you need help with something, I can try and help you with something. Thank you.
No, which comments, actually, you had your chance.
But you can, you can talk to me afterwards. I'm free to, to ask questions.
Nancy Combs.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Combs. I live in San Rosa. I'm a widow of a county. My sister and I, and my two brothers have property in I-40, well, it's a tourist county lot, right on like inside the tourist town. For years, we haven't lived there, nobody lives there, but yeah, we've been paying for the trash. How do we pay for trash that's not generated? If we go see or check the place, we'll pick up our stuff, and I take it home to my house and drop it off in the trash. But yet, where's the beginning bill? I live in Roswell, and I came here for this thing. I'm disappointed, but my question is, why are we getting charged for nothing? There's no bins out there. We've gotta travel all the way to Reagan, Reagan Hill? I don't know where, you know, it's, you don't have anything. What's the purpose? Where's the money going? And that's not a lot. Money don't last long. You know, we don't have, but it's, except we have their turds, but we gotta keep cattle to keep the property for us. And we pay taxes. It's just like that gentleman was saying, for the police, fire, all that. We all pay taxes. I pay insurance, I pay my taxes. It's all covered. I fight, it's all good and well, because I, I use it, but if I'm not using, why do I pay for a service that is not provided? Simple. That's the question. I've had it for years. We're not in a city. We're not in a town. We're out in the open, out there, way out there. And we're paying you guys. Wow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nirav Dasevich?
Good morning, everybody. Nirav Dasevich, uh, Mexico Waste Service. Um, I, I, are these rates, I, I see the recommendation, but are they, is that what the rate we're gonna go now? Because I see like, my concern is the, the private hauler discount. By, by increasing that, that fee to half of the regular rate, um, you're preventing, you're preventing residents that choose to use a hauler to pick up their trash, um, you're basically double dipping, is what it announces. Because I have to pay, when I pick up the trash, I have to pay at the landfill. And the, and the resident now has to pay. So it basically announces a double dip for that fee. And, and I would, I would suggest, um, maybe elimination of that fee potentially to promote residents to utilize some sort of service, um, or reduce it considerably. Basically, that basically allows people to store their trash. They, they're gonna, they're gonna pile it up until the one day they go to the landfill, because they don't wanna pay me and pay the solid waste. I hear a lot of comments about, you know, recycling and, and everything else. One suggestion is, you know, maybe look at a pay-as-you-drown program. It'll, it's fair and equitable to everyone. You know, people pay what they generate at the, at the transfer stations. It increases recycling, because, you know, therefore, they're not paying for that. It's, it's, it's a proven method, it's, you know, in, in other communities, it may not, it may not happen everywhere, you know? It's costly to implement, for sure, but it's just a thought, you know, that everyone can at least maybe feel that, you know, they're getting what they're, what they're paying for, they're paying for it. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Lucero. Philip Johnson.
My name is Philip Johnson, I'm a Torrance County citizen. I'd like to give my two minutes to Mr. Jim Frost.
Hey, there you are. Give him the mic.
My name is Philip Johnson, I'm a Torrance County citizen. I'd like to give my two minutes to Mr. Jim Frost.
Okay. Jim?
Thank you. Now, keep it brief. I just have one more thing that I wanted to mention was that, well, I was asked this morning if I lived for all my life, and I said, "No, not yet, I hope." But, uh, which reminded me that, that, uh, I was in business here for twenty-four years. And back when we moved here, there used to be a place, a facility to take our trash. And it was about east of town here, on the edge of this little ranch. And there was a real old spot, and everybody threw all the trash in there, and dead animals. And when it rained, there'd be a lot of water there. And we had a good pitch and iron to throw our, our mail into the water. And, uh, sometimes that was a meeting place. If you didn't go to the coffee shop, you could meet your neighbors out there, some of them would be finding useful items to take home. And I was thinking, if that was, if that place was still there by now, how many acres would that, would that cover? That would be an awful lot. Also, we don't have a zoo, or Yellowstone Park in Torrance County, where you can see lots of critters out there. You can see all those snakes, pack rats, rats, sometimes coyotes, they get their breakfast out there. And I'm just thankful that we don't have to do that anymore, that we have a system. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, that is the conclusion of the speaker's...
Excuse me, my name was on the list, and I did not, I did not donate my time, no sir.
Okay, why don't you talk?
Thank you. No, are you kidding me? I'd like to talk.
I don't wanna get y'all...
My name is Edwin Kurt, and I had a couple of points. This is an assessment. I see this as a two-part issue. We have an assessment. Government has every right and every legal right to do that to all citizens. And so I think there's an infusion point between almost everybody that lives out here. What we're understanding is, we're paying a bill for a service. Government can't mandate you pay for a service, but they can't assess you to uniformly share a cost for the public good. I do believe the landfill is a public good. I think, I agree with Mr. Frost, and many people have looked at yours for years. This has helped playing the county up a great deal. Um, I think the assessment portion is inadequately applied. Applying it to a house and not land, the makeup land gains as much from the removal of this trash as my house does. So I think that this should be divided. I think on the bills that Mr. Ellis produces for us, if he's gonna manage everything, if he's gonna bend the assessment, on my bill, I should have a line item that says, "My portion of the assessment," I've heard lots of numbers, thirty-three thousand properties in the county, total cost divided by thirty-three thousand parcels, my cost is five bucks. Then, if I would like to take trash to the landfill directly, if I would like to take trash to the station, if I would like Mr. Radusevich's company to come pick that up at my front door, then I should pay a second item on that bill. If I don't do that, I shouldn't get charged, because that's the service portion. So I would like very much to see that clearly defined for us, because I fully see this as an assessment, and many here, we see this as a tax without representation. That's my first area. My second area goes to the board itself. I talked to Mr. Ellis about this. I have nothing against any of the members of this board. Uh, and would someone please give me two minutes? I'd like to continue and complete this. The Constitution says on assessments that governmental entities can hold interim boards to manage that for a cycle of six years. After six years, it should be put to a vote of the people to seat that board. And we are, we are underrepresented in this county. We have three seats. There's ten seats for municipals. And I very much would like to see the Solid Waste Act, Authority Act followed, to where there are seven districts defined with an elected member from each district to represent us. So I would appreciate it if the county commission, when they meet, to discuss this. We'll look at the assessment side, look at that billing side, and look at the electability issues for the residents of this county. And that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for coming today. Uh, what, what this board is, is based on the recommendations of the union team that was here, and, and, you know, I'd like to reiterate too, that we tried our best to get an unbiased opinion, and that's why we brought in the union team. We didn't pay them, they didn't have anything to gain by being for or against anything we're doing. Uh, and, and I think their report was favorable, yet they criticized this when they needed to. And I, I, I think it was a very fair assessment. And I'd like to ask from the public, if, we're gonna try to develop a comprehensive plan, if you would submit to us any of your ideas, you know, this, nothing is set in stone, and that's what we have in public hearing for. If you've got some ideas that we haven't implemented, I, I think it'd be something we should look at, and we will. And, uh, I'd like to say also, and I think most of you know, uh, many members on this board, and, uh, I think that if any of the confirmation and the information we've received this public hearing from the public, uh, it's, it's not accurate, so check with, we can give you accurate figures. Thank you for coming. Joe, did you...
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to let folks know that, uh, up until last week, we did have a webpage on the Torrance County NIM website. Um, it turns out, we were continually, um, making changes and updating, and it was becoming somewhat of a burden, and the county invited us to, uh, to go elsewhere. So you can now go to ebswa.com, and there is the real-time website. Um, we, we have our agendas, we have our board minutes going back to, uh, July of twenty-twelve. For Torrance County customers, there's vital information here. Um, we've got, uh, we've got information on the landfill. Um, we've got other types of forms that are available for folks right there to print and fill out. And we also have, um, where, where Mr. Williams is inviting folks to make comment, you can actually, if you would like to go onto the website and, uh, post your comments there, we'll be, we'll make sure that, uh, that the board receives everything that comes in.
That's a website? Or is that an email address?
I know, that's the website. EBSWA.com.
Hey, Joe. Can I have, I would like to ask the public a couple of questions, so myself as a board member, to bring this, uh, maybe some of these things up to the board. My name's Joe Barnes, Vice Chair of the Central Solid Waste. Would you rather see, uh, a yearly billing? Would you rather see this billing on your tax statement? Or would you rather receive a quarterly bill?
About per item billing. In other words, if we go to, to the solid waste, a front load, and we don't bill, if we only have to go there once a year, then we don't get billed.
That's right.
And billed for what you carry in, not billed across the board.
Would you be willing to pay a fee like you, on your taxes, like you have to pay for the...
No.
You didn't like to pay? You don't even know what I'm going to say. You know what the question is?
You said tax.
I said, would you rather pay on your tax bill, a fee, that, um, would sustain the landfill, keep your payments, uh, lower for the, for the people that are using it, yet, you know, Mr. Frost said, you have to pay for your, uh, for your police, you have to pay for your ambulance services there, whether you use them or not. You have to pay for the roads. You have to pay for the roads in front of your neighbor's house, whether you have to use it or not. Would you, would you rather have just a billing that's once a year on your tax?
I'd like to see the split, like I mentioned. Assess my property per deed, a proportional share of the cost of the improvement for the public good. For, for the landfill, the buildings, the trucks, the employees, the insurance issues that direction, the overinflated administrative position, I think, should remain on the services side. And I, in my opinion, that should be divvied up among the people that use the transfer stations, the people that use the landfill, which goes back to what I was saying, it's an assessment.
Development could be paid for on an assessment.
It is assessment right now, Joe.
And the people that use it should be paying for the, for the...
Whoever dumps should pay to dump. Whoever lives here benefits from the public, the public good, benefits. The public good, it's for the public good. That's what a road is. A road tax is for the public good. Correct? Policing, fire, ambulance, all of those county services are for the public good. Yes. Assess me a proportional share based on my deeded properties. Am I an idiot? Am I an idiot? I have multiple deeded properties. I'm going to pay more than somebody that has a ten-acre parcel if it's run by deed. Am I willing to do that? Yes. Because I believe we need this, but the hostage position that everybody feels that we have is it's colluded. You guys sent us a bill and say, this is a bill for our servicing you. I didn't ask for the service. Nobody here asked for the service.
Well, service is mandated to us.
No, you cannot, government cannot mandate a service. They cannot.
The ETA, they came in and they said, we must have this for Torrance County. We have got to have a substantial, sustainable way to pick up the trash in Torrance County.
Incorrect.
Despite... Would you like to explain?
No, it's incorrect. It's, it's incorrect. What, it is incorrect, Joe, because you still have it mixed up. And I'll, I'll be quiet, Mr. Williams, I'm sorry, but I, I mean, I'm, I'm an intelligent person and I've studied this a great deal. I'm not going to U N M to get a business degree. I got a crummy little two-year associate's degree in the School of Hard Knocks and I'm a very logical and intelligent person. And here is the point. This is an assessment. Government is allowed to assess the public for the public good. That's the landfill. That's the buildings, that's the trucks. The service portion of me or anybody else in this room, taking a bag of trash to the station, taking a truckload to the station or to the landfill, that's the service portion. And that cannot be mandated, that you tell me I have to pay you for a service. I have to ask you for that service. It's, you can equate it to going into the clerk's office. And you go in before me and you want five copies and I go in and say good morning and they say, well George, Joe just came in and bought five, needed five copies. You owe me one of those copies, pay me. I don't have to pay for your copies. You shouldn't have to pay for mine, it's the same with the trash. The assessment side, yes. The service side, no. Separated.
All right, well, thank you. That was, I was looking for an answer.
Thank you, and probably good idea, you know, submit something to us while we're talking.
Do you have a deadline for that?
We haven't got a deadline for our comprehensive plan, I don't believe, but we would like to do it as soon as possible. We've got, don't predict a time for spring, that I don't worry, other than meeting the county's fiscal year timeframe.
And as far as for going forward to ask the commission for an increase on the current customers that are identified, how soon do you plan on doing that?
I don't know who said a particular time.
I would really seriously like to ask you to stall that until all of the current residential locations are identified, because there's an unequal and unfair positioning there right now too. Four thousand of us are paying, you've got approximately two thousand, two thousand five hundred locations that are not. And so the entire cost, the entire liability, everything for the system is burdened on four thousand of us. So I would, I would respectfully request that no increase be considered or sought until that's corrected. That, I, I'm respectfully requesting that.
I second that.
Air motion during the meeting.
Bill?
Your second?
Bill?
Yes?
You said that, you said that we could ask questions and I'm waiting for my turn.
Oh, yeah.
No, you said comments, questions were different from the comments I asked you. And there's people here that I'm sure want to ask a question.
Go to the mic, Tony.
Okay. And I thought that was the questions were during the U N M.
Make a decision or the, or the commission before they make a decision on who they're going to bill and how much they're going to bill, or are they just going to string it on with people and say, hey, you know, we thought it over, we took your comments in. My, my concern, Bill, with this whole deal is, I, people don't mind paying for services, you know, everybody, we have to, but our problem is, we're paying the services and other people are still dumping, or they go throw the trash in my place, I have to clean it up. Does the county go and clean the trash that other people throw on our properties? We haven't done. And the thing is, that scares me, is if we don't play this thing right, in the city of Albuquerque and places like that, it's real easy to catch the people that are throwing trash. Out here it's not. You know, out here people own big pieces of land and, you know, it, it's going to hurt a lot of people that have three or four deeds if they start getting charged for, for every single deed, even though they have the whole piece of property together. And, you know, my thing is, take into consideration, when you guys do this, that how are you going to control these people that are going to come and throw their trash on our property?
They're not going to, they don't have any capacity.
Every month, we pick up about five trash bags, beer cans, whiskey bottles, people just throw their trash. I've lost cows that have eaten the trash bags. And my thing is, how are you going to control it? You know, because there, if you make it harder and harder, what's going to happen is the people that are paying, that are going to still have to keep paying for this. And, and the people that are going to do wrong, we need to figure a way to stop these people that are doing the wrong.
Okay, thank you, John.
Give requests or comments or answers before you try to go through a juror without either...
We're not here to provide the answers today, we're here to...
I'm not. He asked the question. What do we think?
Okay.
Okay. What I think, if you put it into the taxes...
Can you tell me your name, please?
Billy Mitchell.
Thank you very much.
Go to the mic.
L I V. Okay. Thank you.
And depending as he asks for comments and questions or answers. You put it into the taxes, we don't know what you're doing with that.
What you do if you look at the budget reports, isn't there?
Yeah, the budget reports are correct. Yeah, they are. I'm an accountant also and you can sit there and throw things at me every day. I would like to see on the website, every single penny that has been distributed to vendors, to people, to dogs, to cats, or whatever. You throw my taxes up because of that, it's going to get lost in the waters again. Leave it separate. Give me a billing statement like everybody is pretty close to saying. If I, I live in a single household, my neighbors have four kids, who generates the most trash? Sure as heck not me. But I'm paying the same amount as everybody else in the neighborhood. This commission needs to get their stuff together, that's not using the word I use, and make an assessment, get your tail feathers. You make eighty-seven thousand dollars a year, go house to house. Ask how many people live there. Look at your census that was taken. The census tells you how many people are in that house. You want your eighty-seven thousand dollars a year, go out and do your job instead of sitting in the office and collecting. Okay, John.
Thank you.
No, don't put it with our taxes in a deadlock. Bill it individually. We all have to have those transfer numbers.
So you think everybody should build a different amount?
Yes. It's only shares. And most of us clean up our own neighborhood. And I have to drive. Some people have to go through three counties to dump trash. People off Wanta Moss and Barton Road have to come to my transfer station, which is approximately fifteen miles, three counties to dump their trash. Wanta Moss and Barton Road needs a transfer station.
Okay, thank you.
I'm so...
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a quick question. When will you schedule another public hearing like this one?
Not sure.
No, no, no.
Well, I can't schedule it today because I don't know.
No, I understand that, but like you guys are going to go through what's been said here today and yada, yada, yada. So like within another month or so, you could possibly hold another public meeting.
If we do, it'll be published like this one was.
Thank you.
For a couple of weeks prior.
Oh, sorry. Melinda Johnson. I don't know.
Anybody else have a question? Yes?
I'd just like to make a suggestion to kind of everybody involved. Majority of people that serve on the board are volunteers, they're citizens like you. The assumption that often comments are so out of context, we live in a rural county, we have lots of distance to travel. Phrasing criticism as though the board and there's some sort of plan to make it difficult for you, because we all choose to live out and have, have a great distance to cover and it's inconvenient and expensive. People need to try to, to, to understand and, and adjust to the notion that we have a lot of problems. We have a, a small community, our tax base is low, but the cost of everything we have to accomplish is just as high as it is for everybody else. With recycling, for example, we're, we're, all across the nation, rural, rural communities can't afford to recycle because it costs more money because of transportation and all these issues. And I'd ask everybody to, to at least assume that most of the people who are contributing and trying to problem solve are not the enemy. They're just like you, they volunteer their time, they make the best choices they can make, and, and more, more often than not, it comes down to facing limits. Everybody sits at the kitchen table and you balance your checkbook. And when you don't have enough money, you have to, you have to acknowledge limits. And this whole operation from beginning to, to, through, right through today, functions with that, with that context. A little context and a little, perhaps a little less, you know, hostile in a demeanor, everybody's trying to work this out. We have real limits, both in our county and our state and in the country. And so try to, try to understand that the people that are working on this, they're working with limits and they have to make choices between this or that, not, not the idyllic situation. A little less anger maybe might go a long way to, for us as a community to work out our problem.
I think you said, we are a very poor community and I think let's look at some wages. Let's just, I think, if the reasonable wage is thirty thousand a year...
I'm just asking...
Everybody's not volunteering.
No, I'm not saying that they are. I'm just saying that, that, that a lot of the people that, that get very heavy criticism, they show up, they volunteer, and they spend their time and effort and, and they're, they're looking out, they're just like you. They're, they're having to deal with limits. And if, if we can all just be a little more respectful of the fact that everybody's trying to accomplish a task in, in the context of the limits and difficulty, maybe we can make a little bit of progress and, and a little less hostility. It is very helpful. I just, I'm saying, being nice is, is not a bad thing.
I think we've been very nice.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just...
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Margaret.
All these quick questions turned into more comments and that's not right, so...
I have a question, I'm just telling you, I ride my mountain bike on, on Camino del Norte by the, this north of Tejic. Somehow this dump that Mr. Frost will be referring to years ago is happening now just about a mile north of fifty-five on Camino del Norte. And it's just, I pass by it every week, I see more trash people just dumping stuff.
It takes a long time to get those to the...
Service is your name.
Michael Coons.
It takes a long time to get those to the courts. I know that, that some of them have been prosecuted and it's a slow process, it really is.
I guess my question, I mean, I, I would volunteer my time and my truck and I'll go there and start picking stuff up, but I don't know if I can dump that trash. I mean, if people are going to keep dumping there, I don't want to, you know, go and pick it up and get rid of it. I would be glad, glad to spend my time to go there and pick up some of this stuff, maybe some other people would like to help out.
Would the transfer stations take that without charging?
Hi, my name's Magantha Hens. I just wanted to make a comment in response to this gentleman who, I don't know his name, who spoke about, look, Linda works for the town of Estancia, she worked for my husband, who was mayor. Waste removal and situations are very important to the, to the quality of lifestyle for any community. And so I can look at it from a microcosm of the town of Estancia. The reality is, is that when we first moved to this town, and I, I'm sorry if I'm taking more time, but the Harp Hare was being used as a dump. The pond was being used as a dump. Solid waste removal is an important thing and, and, but what I have seen, sometimes when I come to meetings, I'm here because my husband asked me to come because he's out of town. I was out of town this last year. Sometimes people come to these meetings and whether you're county commissioners or public employees for the solid waste authority, we, who pay our bills, whether it's through a town municipality or at the county level, we're here to learn and, because this is a public hearing. And sometimes what I hear are just legitimate questions and the demeanor, with all due respect to the gentleman in front of me, the demeanor from some of the employees and some of the county commission representatives is very, it's like, there's an assumptive reaction that a legitimate question from an audience member is, is somehow alienating or antagonizing. Sometimes they're legitimate questions born out of trying to learn something. So while we understand that we have to be respectful, we would appreciate a less antagonistic response from the people that are serving here. You guys make salaries because we, we pay it. I think that it's important for everybody to, we all understand the value of solid waste removal to the quality of life of any community. But a little bit of friendly, you know, reaction from you guys, just because we show up to a meeting, doesn't mean we're on one side or the other, we're here to learn. And, and the negative reaction that we get just in body language or the assumptive ways is, is, is really counterproductive to any of us all working together. And by the way, when we were cleaning up that pond, it was me and my husband and my children and a few local community members, and we weren't getting paid either. And I remember standing in that mud dredging the pond, and there are lots of people in this county that will be willing to help if there's an issue of workload. But don't assume that everybody coming to these meetings is against you, but by the same tone, have some respect for where we're coming from. Some of us, like everybody else, we pay taxes, we work, we do all of these things and we're here to learn. And sometimes the information is not transparent. So that's why we're here. That's all I wanted to make was a comment, that the reciprocation of attitudes has to be both directions. Thank you.
Brian Chaffman, county resident. I want to make sure that the board has given attention to the possibility that separating disposal and collection, maybe privatizing collection, keeping the disposal under the control of the county for safety and legal reasons, might be a solution to a lot of problems I'm hearing. It seems like the aggravation is in the collection part. And George over here brought up making an assessment to run the disposal, which is properly governed and is more a technical issue than a service. And maybe the county can put out a bid, all the collection, set standards for it and let people compete to do the best job for the lowest price. The voter wins, the, we keep control of the landfill for technical and safety reasons, but we make the service a private matter. That keeps money in the county. I'm all for everything the county spends ended up in the pocket of somebody in the county because they're paying taxes and it all flows back.
Good, thank you. Thank you again for coming, appreciate your time and, yes, ma'am.
We pay for a private garbage collector to suddenly take our trash. Everything. And most of the people in our community do the same thing. So we don't need, we don't need the landfill, we pay for that, we get it. So why should we have to pay that extra pay, uh, bill from you guys every three months while we don't use your services? That's what I don't think is fair, because we're double, we pay double.
Well, not really. You use our landfill, you see, that goes to landfill. And, you know, we still have billing and we have, we have, it's the same thing as, again, with our police and, you know, we still have to maintain that, that level of service.
The people that we hire to take our trash pays down. We, we pay down to take our...
We still have a monitor and it has to be on our books and we have to, we have to... I know. We still have a monitor and it has to be on our books and we have to, we have a certain amount.
Okay, thank you. Art, you got something new to contribute?
Yeah, I want a question to the committee of the people. Please go ahead and investigate the anti-trust aspects of that question. Let me just ask first. The authority is imposing a burden on private haulers on the county. Some private haulers have said they can do the job cheaper and come door to door and get your garbage out of here. And why isn't the county looking at other solutions and just giving more money to the authority?
We have talked about this. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. County Commissioner. Thank you all again for coming. Take proposals here. Take the term. I get the message. We've made an executive term. I'll declare a stay.